Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the Township of Howell Planning Board for Thursday, July 20th, 2017. Ellie, an opening statement, please.
Good evening. I hereby declare this meeting of the Howell Township Planning Board to be open. Adequate notice having been given pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act in the following manner. First, on January 6th, 2017, a copy of said notice was mailed to the Star Ledger and the Tri-Town News. Second, on January 6th, 2017, a copy of said notice was hand-delivered to the Clerk of the Township of Howell. Third, on January 6th, 2017, said notice was posted in the office of the Planning Board and on the bulletin board in the Howell Township Municipal Building, 4567 Route 9, Howell Township, New Jersey. In accordance with the Fire Prevention Code and your safety, please be advised that this facility is designed with two emergency exits which are on your right at the front and rear of the meeting room. Furthermore, smoking is not permitted in the municipal building. Please take note that this meeting is being videotaped for possible future broadcast on Howell Township TV 77.
Roll call, please.
Former Mayor Gatto? I have not heard from him. Mr. Husser? I have not heard from. Chief Kudrick?
Here.
Mr. Nash?
Present.
Mr. Russo?
Here.
Mr. Tannenhouse?
Here.
Mr. French?
Here.
Mr. Boyle?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Nacastro?
Here.
Mayor Berger's been excused, and Chairman Schneider?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, and then a moment of silence to recognize our troops wherever they are protecting us and our first responders and our police that are putting their lives on the line every day for us. Chief?
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes, I have two things to bring up. The first is a letter from Michael Butler. He is the attorney for L&amp;L Paving. He has asked that this application, which is on tonight's agenda, be carried to August 17th, 2017 with no further notice. He also granted an extension of time through September 30th, 2017.
You're gonna make the announcement no notice?
Not me. Somebody, Paul or John, just carries it.
The, uh, the, it'll be, it's application number?
1026.
1026A, L&amp;L Paving. That's, uh, that's, uh, number 9C on the agenda. Uh, the applicant's attorney has requested that the matter be carried, and I recommend that that matter be carried without notice to the August 17th, 2017 meeting. Therefore, if there is anyone here in the, in the room that is here for that, that meeting, and should the board agree to carry it to August 17th, this is your notice that the, that the application will be carried to August 17th, 2017.
Thank you. The other notice I sent out late today to all the members was regarding ordinance number O-1728. It's a land use to amend Chapter 188-226 entitled Commercial Parking. Uh, we have till the next meeting to actually vote on it and say whether it's consistently, uh, consistent with our master plan, but I just wanted to bring it up to make sure that everybody does look at their emails and read this so you're prepared at the next hearing.
I have a question for the deputy mayor. I, I read the ordinance. I didn't see bollards required for perpendicular parking to the building and to a highway.
Laura, do you want to address that?
I do. Uh, Mr. Chairman, we actually found where that's codified in the ordinance currently, and we've recommended language to expand it to also surround outdoor seating.
So that's the purposes of this?
That's correct.
So it's already there, they're just expanding it. So they'll be revising this and we'll get a revision?
So perpendicular parking to a building and to a highway would require the bollards?
A protective barrier, but yes, because i- in the past, we've allowed planters. But just so you're aware, uh, Mr. Chairman, and I was pleasant to see this, we had already made the change for parking-loading service areas separated from walkway streets, alleys, or other protective devices. So that was in there, but we've expanded it to include outdoor seating, so yes.
Okay, thank you.
That's it. All the other correspondence was emailed to the members.
Okay, we have a few resolutions to memorialize. First one is case number SP 1035, Joseph Wilhelm Resolution granting submission waivers. Can I have a motion for, to memorialize?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to memorialize case number SP 1035.
And eligible voters are Mr. Nash, Russo, French, Boyle, Deputy Mayor Nacastro, and myself. You have a second?
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Nash?
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. French?
Yes.
Mr. Boyle?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Nacastro?
Yes.
And Chairman Schneider?
Yes.
Resolutions memorialized.
Next is case number SP 1020A, Wawa Incorporated Resolution granting minor site plan approval. Eligible voters are Chief Kudrick, Mr. Nash, Tannenhouse, French, and myself.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to memorialize the resolution for case number SP 1020A.
I'll second it.
Roll call, please.
Chief Kudrick?
Yes.
Mr. Nash?
Yes.
Mr. Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. French?
Yes.
And Chairman Schneider?
Yes.
Resolutions memorialized.
Case number SP 1036, Rosano Howell Land LLC Resolution granting submission waivers. Eligible voters are Chief Kudrick, Nash, Mr. Tannenhouse, Mr. French, and myself.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to memorialize the resolution for case number SP 1036.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Chief Kudrick?
Yes.
Mr. Nash?
Yes.
Mr. Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. French?
Yes.
Chairman Schneider?
Yes.
Resolutions memorialized.
Last one is case number SP 1015A, Landmark Plaza Management LLC Resolution granted amended preliminary and final major site plan. Eligible voters are Chief Kudrick, Mr. French, and myself. And roll call, please.
And you have to, you have to motion it.
Motion, please.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Mr. French, Schneider?
Seven.
You'll have to second. You're the one. The chief.
I'll second.
I'll second it.
Chief, you second. Roll call, please.
Chief Kudrick?
Yes.
Mr. French?
Yes.
Chairman Schneider?
Yes.
Resolutions memorialized. Thank you.
First order of business is a review of a submission waiver before the board, case number SP 2979, Howell Family Apartments LLC. It's a minor subdivision. Application of Howell Family Apartments LLC as applicant and Rabbi Israel Meyer Hakon Rabbinical Seminary of America as owner seeking minor subdivision approval to subdivide the property into a 12.468 acre parcel and a 14.5856 acre parcel on premises known as block 135, lot 25 and 26, Route 9, and West Farms Road. Counselor?
Uh, good evening, Mr. Chairman. Uh, my name's Joe Del Duca. I'm general counsel for the applicant, and, uh, I'm here on behalf of the applicant. Uh, the, the waiver request, it's in Laura's letter, I think. There's only a couple items. The first two items, which are the list of property owners, we, we already provided.
Mr. Chairman, would you prefer, do you want to swear me in?
Do you promise to swear and tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth during the course of the hearing this evening?
I do. Mr. Chairman, the submission waivers are specifically denoted in Page 3, Item 4 of our report. Um, it is a minor subdivision with no improvements proposed at this time. However, I do feel that checklist item number seven, the certified list of all property owners within the 200 feet radius, um, the names of all property adjoiners and use designation of all lots within 200 feet, I think that should be provided. They do show structures and owners on the plan, but I think it's fair to get the uses on the, on the map. Uh, but as it relates to checklist item 53, 55, and 56, because no improvements are proposed at this time, I would take no exception to the granting of those. However, I would recommend that checklist items seven and 52 be provided certainly before there was a public hearing.
Is that okay, Counselor?
Yeah, we agree. We already have seven in, and we'll send 52 tomorrow. It's finished and ready to go.
No, that's very good. We have a motion there?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to grant submission waiver, uh, for item, checklist items number 53, 55, and 56.
I'll second that.
Roll call, please.
Chief Kudrick?
Yes.
Mr. Nash?
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. French?
Yes.
Mr. Boyle?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Nacastro?
Yes.
And Chairman Schneider?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Have a good night, Counselor.
Next submission waiver is a case number SP 1034, Gutierrez Properties LLC, Daisy 21 dot oh one, a minor site plan. Application of Gutierrez Properties LLC as applicant and owner seeking a minor site plan and Woodlands Management Plan approval to utilize the property as a storage yard for construction material on premises known as block 49, lot 21 dot oh one, Lakewood Farmingdale Road. That's County Road 524, 547. Counselor?
Good evening, Chairman, and board members. My name is Robert F. Munoz, Davidson Eastman, Munoz, Letterman, and Payone. I'm here on behalf of the applicant.
Then speak right into the microphone, please.
Sure. Want me to say it again?
Yep.
Okay, Robert F. Munoz.
You can move that up. I'm sorry. There you go.
Okay. I didn't know it was movable. Robert F. Munoz of Davidson Eastman Munoz, Letterman and Payone, on behalf of the applicant. I guess Laura will go through and comment.
Yeah, please, Laura.
If I could, Mr. Chairman, the checklist items are specifically listed on Page 3, Item
4 of our report. Um, it's an interesting site plan because no site improvements are proposed with this. It's just they're looking to designate a portion of their property for storage of construction material. So while the list seems to be pretty lengthy given the scope of the work or lack of work, I don't really take an exception to it with the exception of item 51A, description of proposed machinery operations, products, process, and processes onsite. I think that for the storage area, considering what we're gonna use it, we should understand what we're storing. The board will spend a lot of time, what's being stored, how many vehicles are being stored, or how the storage areas are gonna be designated. So I think that's something that the board should have prior to a public hearing. But as it, um, as to the balance of the items, I would take no exception to the granting of those waivers for the purposes of deeming complete.
I have no objection, Mr. Chairman. We can provide that. We'll give you more detail than that.
Anybody's questions for the board? Seeing none, or have a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to grant, um, the request for submission waivers for all items with the exception of checklist item number 51A.
Second, please.
Second.
Roll call.
Chief Kudrick?
Yes.
Mr. Nash?
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. French?
Yes.
Mr. Boyle?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Nacastro?
Yes.
And Chairman Schneider?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Good night.
Mr. Boyle, you want to come up? Yeah, Mr. Boyle, you can move up here, please. Mr. Boyle?
Yeah.
Before we start the first order of business, I want to welcome our new planner to the Planning Board, Mika Apte. Welcome, Mika.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
First order of business, this application is case number SP 1008A, Lion Holdings LLC. This is an amended preliminary and final major site plan, including bulk variances and Woodlands Management. It's application of Lion Holdings LLC as applicant and owner seeking amended preliminary and final major site plan approval with ancillary bulk variances and Woodlands Management to construct a 3,864 square foot medical office with site improvements including parking, driveways, grading, stormwater, lighting, landscaping, and other associated site amenities on premises known as block 48, lot 1 and 3, Alair Road at the intersection of Lakewood Farmingdale Road and Alair Road. The application of Lion Holdings LLC was scheduled to be heard on June 15th, 2017 when it was carried to tonight with no further notice.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. My name is Todd Cohen. I'm the attorney for Lion Holdings LLC. As some of you may recall, in August of 2015, this client received preliminary and final major site plan approval with variance relief for the construction of a building very similar to what's proposed this evening, a two-story medical office building which would house Dr. Ablohak's practice, which is a pediatric practice limited to high-risk infants. Uh, subsequent to the approval and during the wetlands permitting process, the NJDEP required my client to obtain not just an archaeological Phase 1, but also an archaeological Phase 2. And after conducting those studies, the results there were that the site was designated a formal archaeological site with the New Jersey State Museum as part of the Jackson Forge House Site, and our engineer will, uh, give you more details about that during testimony. But these are the findings that caused the relocation of the office building more to the west and generated the application before you this evening. Uh, with me this evening to testify is Mr. Jim Henry from Dynamic Engineering, a professional engineer, and we also have Mr. James Miller, a professional planner. Uh, what I'd like to do is have the witnesses sworn. We have a couple exhibits to mark, and then we can begin testimony, if that's okay with Mr. Chairman.
Gentlemen, raise your right hand, please. Do you promise to swear and tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth during the course of this hearing?
I do.
Please state and spell your names for the record, please.
James Henry, H-E-N-R-Y is last name, from Dynamic Engineering. I'll be the professional engineer.
James Miller, M-I-L-L-U-R, J. Miller Planning Consultants.
Thank you. And, and Mr. Henry, could you provide, provide your credentials for the board?
Sure. I have a bachelor's from Rutgers University in civil engineering with a minor in public planning. I also have a master's from Rutgers University in civil engineering. I've, uh, worked in similar developments, commercial, industrial, and residential for over 10 years, and I'm a principal of Dynamic Engineering Consultants.
Chairman, we have the disqualification, except for the professional engineer.
I'll accept your credentials.
Thank you.
I'm a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey. I'm also certified by the American Institute of Certified Planners as a certified planner. I've appeared as an expert witness and been qualified as an expert in over 230 municipalities in the state of New Jersey, also in state and federal courts. And a few years back, I was qualified as an expert by the zoning board of Howell.
I'll accept your credentials.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Jim, it's my understanding we have two exhibits we're gonna mark for the board this evening. Could you identify them, please?
That is correct. Uh, first is the site plan rendering dated June 15th, 2017. That's gonna be marked. Which, what number are we up to?
I believe it's A-13.
A-13?
I think we're, I think we're at A-12.
A-12.
A-12?
Yeah. And this rendering was not submitted previously to the board, is that correct?
That is correct. It's just a color rendering of the site plan and landscape plan overlaid.
Okay, thank you.
And the second exhibit is going to be a, um, the site plan of the previously approved project on this property. And that's gonna be entitled Preliminary and Final Site Plan, prepared by Lindstrom Directizer and Carr PC, last revised January of 2016.
And that will be exhibit A-13.
A-13, correct. The other exhibits that we're gonna be presenting tonight have already been entered, so, um, there are several of them, but most of them have already been entered as part of the, uh, other exhibits that were listed.
That's fine.
Jim, if you could, uh, please describe the application before the board tonight?
Sure. The, uh, the project is located just off of Route 195 at the corner of Lakewood, Farmingdale Road, and Alair Road at the northeastern corner of the intersection. Uh, it's, um, it's known as block 48, lots 1 and 3. It's located within the SED Special Economic Development Zone. Uh, the proposed use is gonna be a medical use. Uh, it's kind of an undeveloped, developed site. Part of it is wooded along the easterly side of the property, and then that, there's an area near, near the corner of the intersection that's partially wooded. Uh, the site is completely undeveloped. Uh, it's 2.04 acres. The property slopes generally from the north to the south towards Alair Road. Uh, to the north of the, of the existing parcel is ideal tile and industrial use. Uh, to the west of the development is a, um, residential property located at the intersection, a single-family house. Uh, to the southwest of the property is a multi-family development, townhouses. I'm sure many of you are familiar with it. And then just to the south of the, the subject site is, um, an RV repair, um, dealer. Uh, all the way to the east is really undeveloped land. Uh, essentially, it's Alair State Park. I mean, you know, I'm sure everybody's familiar with it. Uh, as you go down Alair, Alair Road, it kind of leads to, uh, the park, and it goes on for a number of miles. Uh, to the south is 195. Uh, to the north is obviously Farmingdale, and then to the, uh, west is kind of what I consider, you know, downtown Howell, Route 9, so. Um, just gonna first start off by just describing, uh, as was mentioned by Mr. Cohen, uh, this application was previously approved by this board, um, a number of years ago. I'm gonna go through and kind of describe what was previously approved, because it's pretty similar to what we're proposing here. Some things have shifted around because of, um, we, we identified, following the approval of the board last time, that there is an archaeological site on this property, which significantly impacted the variances and the overall layout of the site. So as part of, this application was an amended application, we're looking to essentially shift the development which had previously been proposed on the easternly side of the property, which is, obviously, if you look at it, if you look at the site, it's the, it's the wider part of the property. Uh, the site is uniquely shaped, so now with the archaeological site shown on the, on the, um, site plan, we had to shift the development all the way to the, to the east in order to avoid the archaeological site. And I'm gonna go into the archaeological site in the background and all that a little bit later. So, um...
Point for the board.
Uh, just referencing A-13, uh, the subject, the property was, was actually originally approved by a different engineering consultant. Uh, the overall development was a two-story medical office, 38, approximately 3,800 square feet, where the proposed building was located in the center of the lot. To the east of the parking area, or east of the building was a parking area, kind of two-way circulation around the entire parking area with a driveway at the southeastern corner of the property. Uh, there was a basin proposed previously along Alair Road, and then there was a walking path proposed, uh, near the northwesternly corner of the property. The, the overall, overall site, the, the exact building area is exactly the same. There's no changes in building area. Parking stalls, approximately the same amount of parking stalls. Essentially, all we did was just shift the overall development to the east and kind of rework it, uh, based on various site constraints.
But the access point has changed, correct?
The access point has changed, that's correct. Um, so I'm referencing A-12, and I'm just gonna go into, kind of, to show you where the archaeological site was identified post-construction. I'll bring that up. So on the, the easterly side of the property, you can see there's kind of a lighter covered colored, um, hatch, encompasses a lot of the wooded area. Uh, that essentially, that's the limits of the archaeological site that was identified as part of the post-approval. Uh, essentially, what happened was, when this application was originally approved, we had an LOI on the property. Uh, in addition, there was also a general permit to fill a portion of the wetlands. They modified that approval, and they went back to the DEP after the, after the application was approved. At that time, uh, the wetlands consultant from the DEP came out and met our wetlands consultant in the field. They identified, uh, that this could potentially be associated with Alair State Park. Um, so at that time, they, they requested that an arc, Phase 1 archaeological study be conducted. Um, they went out there, they did some preliminary, uh, basically tests and, and digging in the ground, and identified that there, uh, definitely were remnants, um, from the Jackson Forge, uh, property, which is just to the east of the site and associated with the overall Alair Village. Um, so when they went out there, they identified that there were like pots, believe they did find a well, um, just kind of remnants of foundations and other, um, smaller, kind of, not, not an overall building, but just archaeological site, archaeological pieces. Um, specifically in the report, they just say ceramics, glass, brick, and they say a, a well, and then remnants of a small cellar were identified as part of the archaeological study. So, when, when we back to the DEP, the DEP basically said that we cannot build our building where the archaeological site is located. We cannot go below existing grade in that hatched area. So we can build in it, but as long as we're above existing grade. So it gets a little complicated with the engineering design, because we ended up having to fill the site in order to make sure we were above the archaeological site and not disturbing it. And then, I'm sure your, your, your thought in your mind is, what's gonna prevent them from approving this tonight and then going back to the DEP and them saying, no, you can't do this? So, as part of, you know, the preliminary phases of when I got involved, um, we sent this, this general layout to the DEP to get their blessing on it, to confirm that we weren't gonna have any issues as far as them approving this project and confirm they weren't, weren't gonna have any issues, uh, with the main drive aisle going over, um, the archaeological site. Um, and they, and they approved this, this layout. Ideally, what I wanted to do, I wanted to stay completely out of the archaeological site and shift it, shift the driveway to the west. I didn't want to touch the archaeological site at all or even go over it. Uh, but unfortunately, uh, based on our meetings with the county, the county wanted to push it as far east as possible. So we're kind of battling two different jurisdictional agencies where one agency is saying, push it west, and the other one's saying, push it east, and finally, we met in the middle, and we partially go into the archaeological site, um, in order to basically get full access driveway on Alair Road. Now, if the county had limited our driveway to just a right-in, right-out, as we mentioned before, to the east of the site is just Alair Park, and for miles, you know, there's, there's no development. So if you're coming off 195 or anywhere in Howell, basically, you wouldn't be able to access the site because you, it's a right-in, right-out driveway. So we've had discussions. We submitted this to the county. The county approved a full, you know, approved, approved a full access driveway at the intersection, or basically, uh, to the east of the intersection, uh, and are comfortable with the driveway layout the way it's shown. Uh, we did receive basically a review letter from the county with some minor technical items, but overall, we've met several times with them to discuss, um, the layout, and they, they verbally kind of approved it. Um, so that, that goes over the archaeological information. Does anybody have any questions about the archaeological issue?
That's very clear.
Okay.
Counselor, if, if we do grant this approval, would there be a deep restriction put on so that the, um, archaeological area can be, you know, memorialized?
There is, there is a requirement as part of the historical preservation, um, approval that we have to put an easement on this property outlining the area that's the archaeological site. In addition, uh, the site has been registered in the state Historic Preservation Office and is, it's, it's on the list of historic places in New Jersey on the, on the, on their website. So... So, um, all the appropriate, you know, things will be done in accordance to the DEP approval.
Well, you said an easement, right?
Right.
All right. Why an easement, why not a deep restriction?
Well, that's one thing, I think those terms are used interchangeably.
Okay.
Correct. We also have several notes on our plans, basically confirming that there's going to be an archaeological, archaeologist onsite during construction to confirm, you know, basically no disturbance of the archaeological site is, is, is done. But overall, we're basically leaving the majority of the archaeological site untouched and we're not even filling within it, we're leaving it, most of it wooded. Um, actually the, there are wetlands onsite within the archaeological site, which is what got us in this whole mess. Um, we're now not even touching those wetlands, we're, they're being maintained, they're going to stay in a vegetated area, which is actually a benefit to the environment where we're not going to be touching them at all as part of the revised plan. So, now that we've gotten that over with, um, so the, the, the building is now shifted to the northwest corner of the site. Uh, as I mentioned, it's a two-story medical office, uh, thirty-eight, three thousand eight hundred sixty-four square feet. Um, the drive aisle off of, um, Alair Road is thirty feet wide. Uh, it meets all the county standards as far as, um, radiuses and, and the concrete apron. When we met with the county, actually, one of the things that is, is another complicated thing about this development, it's a small pro, it's a small property and it's a small, you know, development relatively, so a lot of complicated things going on with it. So as part of, as part of this project, um, the county is actually in the process of upgrading the intersection overall. Uh, that, that construction is going to be started in September. Um, and we've had discussions with the county about that. Our project is, is likely going to go in after the fact and we're going to be using face-forming curbs so we don't actually disturb the road and that we don't impact what the county is actually doing. Uh, we've been in contact with them, we have their plans, we overlaid them on our plans as part of our site plan to make sure that everything kind of, uh, goes together. One of the big things that we're going to be doing, uh, in, in advance of that is that we're going to be doing, uh, a sanitary sewer extension. Uh, the sanitary sewer today is located, um, on the westerly portion of the intersection, uh, just, you know, fifty feet to the, to the west of the property. And we're going to be proposing a sanitary sewer extension connecting to a MRSA, um, sanitary sewer main, which is actually going to be the main connection for this entire part of Howell, um, which, which eventually will likely run down Lakewood-Farmingdale Road, uh, to the north. So as part of this application, we're going to be connecting to public sewer, we're going to be san, doing a sanitary sewer main that essentially is going to, uh, connect to the MRSA main and then run in the middle of the intersection and then run to the north to the, to the top of our property. So we're doing a main extension and then we're going to be connecting our lateral into the sanitary sewer main. Where we, we have been in discussions with the Township of Howell's engineering department as far as trying to get that done prior to the county improvements because once the county improvements are done, there is going to be a moratorium on the road. So, a lot of kind of moving parts in this, but essentially we're, we're going to be putting the sanitary sewer in before the road, before the road improvements and basically doing a stub so that we can connect in without having to disturb the road, so we don't impact the county's improvements at all. So our plan is to, once the county improvements are done, essentially any utilities we have are going to be on our property and we're going to face-form the curb for the, for the driveway, uh, so that we don't impact any of the county improvements.
So Mr. Henry, the, the alignment of Alair Road and the widening of Alair Road shown on the drawing that's up on the screen?
Yep.
That is going to be done by the county?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, um, going to the, the overall site plan layout, um, the site plan itself requires twenty-six spaces. We are compliant, we have twenty-seven spaces proposed. As far as parking stall size, we are compliant as well, we proposed a nine-by, nineteen-by-nine parking stalls. Um, one of the comments by your professionals was to add decorative, uh, bollards along the parking stalls at a butt against the building. We're agreeable to do that, we are going to install those. There were, there was a comment in the review letter about adding sidewalk around the, around the, um, the property. We are proposing sidewalk around the building, it's going to be ADA compliant, we're proposing an ADA stall, um, but we, we don't believe that this is a high pedestrian traffic area. In fact, in the resolution for the previous approval, um, there was a statement made in there that basically said that this, if there was sidewalk to be installed here, you know, it would almost never be used, therefore a waiver was issued for, uh, proposing sidewalk in this general area. Drive aisles, we're proposing twenty-five foot wide drive aisles where there's, um, ninety-degree parking, thirty-foot drive aisle on the easterly side of the building, or easterly side of the site. And then, uh, we, we had proposed a twelve-foot wide drive aisle to the, to the south, it was one-way, uh, so that we didn't have dead-end parking. Um, and that's so the fire, fire truck could circulate the site. The fire, the fire, um, department had requested we increase that to eighty feet and we are agreeable to do that, so that twelve-foot dimension is actually going to change to eighteen-foot, uh, to increase to meet, to meet the fire department's request. Also, just kind of mentioned a few things about the fire department while we're at it. Uh, the fire department also agreed that this, this building does not need to be sprinklered because it's less than five, five thousand square feet. In addition, there's also a, uh, email that I have from Jim Herman, uh, stating that he spoke to the, uh, fire department and they agreed that there would not be a, any sort of, uh, fire hydrants modifications needed near the, near this development. There is a, a fire hydrant located at the southwesterly corner of the intersection, um, that can easily service, uh, this development. Just going into site triangles, the, the driveway that's proposed is a, is a county jurisdiction. Uh, on our landscape plan, we do show site triangles, um, of the driveway. It doesn't impact really anything, it's clear site triangles, there's no problem with, with visibility for the overall driveway. One other minor change we want to make to the site plans, that was a, a comment of one of your reviewers, was that we were going to do post and rail fence around the detention basin that's located at the northeastern corner of the site. That's where all of our stormwater is going to be routed, it's going to be detained there and then it's going to be discharged out to the county, county right away. Again, we have to route kind of the, the pipes for the stormwater around the archaeological site to make sure we're not disturbing within the archaeological site. As far as operations of the clinic, uh, the clinic is generally, um, a general and high-risk doctor for childbirth. Uh, you know, the doctor kind of went over a lot of the operations testimony as part of the previous application. Essentially, hours are generally nine to five P.M. Occasionally, they are going to be open a little late, uh, to service anybody that has, you know, works nine to five, um, where it might be open till like about nine o'clock, um, like one night a week, but generally the hours are going to be nine to five, it's just going to be, um, you know, for, for mothers. Approximately, they're expecting about two and a half to three and a half patients per hour. Uh, over the entire day, they expect about twenty to thirty people, uh, kind of spread out because obviously they have a limited number of patient rooms. Um, overall, number of employees are expecting approximately four employees on, on the prop, on the premises at, at peak time. And then as far as deliveries, uh, UPS is going to come probably once or twice a day and then in addition to that, there are going to be lab pickups which are done by a car and that's going to happen approximately once per day. As far as the, uh, the bulk chart itself, uh, we do have an existing variance as far as for, for, for this zone, uh, for the minimum lot area, uh, we do have a number of variances because, uh, because of uniqueness of this lot and because of the uniqueness of the archaeological site, uh, our entire development is pushed to the northwestern corner of the site. So the front yard setbacks from each road, uh, we have variances for, and then we also have a variance for rear yard setback as we kind of push the building in the, uh, northwestern corner. The minimum front yard setback is sixty feet and we're proposing, uh, eighteen point two and then minimum rear yard is fifty feet and we're proposing nineteen point eight. Just to kind of go over the impervious coverage and other things that you typically see as far as, you know, someone overdeveloping a property, impervious covers, it's allowed to, um, be developed, seventy percent is permitted, whereas the proposed development is only proposing twenty-five point six percent impervious. So, the...
I don't know that I would make that analogy considering...
But there's other contractors, yeah.
...property has to be restricted, so...
Mr. Henry, could you just go back on, on the drainage? All right. I mean, I, I see you show the emergency spillway, but thi- this is really, it, there's no, given the contours that are on here, it's, there's still going to be a couple of feet of water until the, the basin perks.
No, this is not a percolation basin, this is a detention basin. Um, so there is going to be water that fills up in the basin, but it, there is an orifice on the bottom. So generally, this basin actually is supposed to remain dry and actually will have a grass bottom. Whereas a lot of the times, um, for instance, I was involved in the Sonic across the street from this, and that's, that's an infiltration basin that has a, a sand bottom. That has sand on the bottom and, and does percolate into the ground, whereas this is going to be a detention basin. We went out and we completed test pits with it all over the site, determined if there was any permeability. And, and as engineers, we like permeability because it's a lot cheaper designed for our client. Unfortunately, in this particular instance, uh, there's a lot of clay soil in this, in this area, so we weren't able to get any, the proper percolation needed to do infiltration, so we're going to be doing detention basin with a manufactured treatment device.
If we could just stay on that, uh, there's a comment further in our report that you don't meet the two-year reduction requirements?
Yes, we, after we, we met with you at, at the TRC, Laura, um, we took a look at it and we were, we are able to comply with that requirement. Just going to go into lighting. We are proposing, uh, several building lights, uh, throughout the property, sev- seven in total. Uh, and then we're proposing two downward-facing lights under the overhang in the front of the building. And then we are proposing five, uh, area lights, LED. Uh, they're only mounted at, at fourteen-foot height, uh, being that it's kind of a residential area. Uh, we have mounted them at, at a lower height in order to take that into consideration. Uh, we do have a, a waiver that is required though, uh, because I believe your ordinance requires a maximum of zero point five-foot candles, uh, average over the entire area. Uh, we are slightly above that. IES standard, which is kind of the standard in lighting, um, requires a zero point five-foot candle minimum, uh, within the parking area. So it's just very hard to meet that requirement, uh, because you, at, right underneath the lights, you have, you know, obviously higher than zero point five because you need to have it throw, um, further away from the actual light itself in order to meet that zero point five minimum requirement. So we do have, we do require a waiver from that. Overall, I, we, we do, there are residential uses adjacent to the property. Uh, we've took that into consideration in the design. Uh, we located basically the majority of the parking area to the easterly side of the building, uh, and at the front property line, uh, near, near the residential, uh, it is zero-foot candles at the property line. And it's also zero-foot candles at the northerly property line with the adjacent, uh, tile property. So there is, there is a little bit of illumination as you get down towards the driveway, uh, which pulls itself away from the residential uses, uh, to safely illuminate the driveway that's proposed.
Do you, uh, the light fixtures on the western portion of the building, what are they? Are those downlights in a socket?
They're fully downward cutoff lights facing, yeah. They're not, they're not like area lights or anything.
And can you describe what are you proposing for the controls of the lighting?
As far...
And what are the typical times of day that the lights will be on?
Sure, the, the lights themselves are likely going to be open on, are going to be on until the close of business and then we, we plan to, to just leave one or two of the lights on for security and some of the, some of the building lights on for security purpose. But overall, um, after the, the close of operation, which generally will happen around five o'clock or potentially at nine o'clock once, once a week, um, the lights generally will be off with potentially one or two of those lights on just for security purpose.
Can you figure out which ones you would put off for security purpose?
Yeah, I can talk to my client and kind of clarify that for you.
And then would he be willing to put that in the resolution on the, the time that he'd be operating the lights?
Sure, I can discuss that with my client as well.
Okay, and do you feel that you have enough light at the entrance of the, the driveway?
Yes, it's not excessively illuminated, but, um, it, it is safely illuminated.
Well, that's my concern, it doesn't look like I'm, I'm on the other side of the fence on the entrance.
Sure.
Especially if you have people leaving at nine o'clock at night.
Yeah, we have zero point five-foot candle, oh, throughout the entire driveway. Uh, so I think, I think we're safely illuminated from a safety perspective. Uh, as far as landscaping, uh, we are, uh, the overall philosophy is basically, uh, to use varying colors, uh, textures and heights to kind of soften the proposed development and really make it fit in with the residential character of, of this corner of Howell. Um, obviously, for a lot of, for a lot of people coming off of one ninety-five, this is one of the first sites you're going to see as you enter Howell. Uh, we want to make sure that it, you know, from a landscape perspective, it really represents the neighborhood overall. Uh, we did propose a number of, uh, trees, kind of circulating the site. We do have shade, some shade trees, uh, proposed along the, uh, westerly and southerly port, uh, area, excuse me, the westerly and southerly boundaries of the site. We're also proposing other trees around the detention basin, um, on, at the rear of the site. Uh, in addition to that, we are proposing a number of shrubs. Um, overall, the number of trees we're proposing are fourteen total trees and then, um, I believe your professionals requ- requested us to change a couple of the species, um, in order to kind of mix it up a little bit more and we're, we're agreeable to do that as well. As far as shrubs, we're proposing a hundred and twenty-two shrubs throughout the parking area. General idea of when we're designing, um, the landscaping, uh, basically to try and block headlights from, you know, going to any residential homes or going to, uh, cars passing by and that's what we tried to do here. Uh, we did propose shrubs around the exterior of the, uh, parking area. There was a comment where, um, they wanted, the, the board's professionals wanted a full three-foot, um, year-round kind of vegetative buffer to make, to make, ensure the headlights are blocked and we are going to comply with that comment and modify a couple of the species to make sure we're compliant. In addition, um, there, there was a comment as well regarding the number of street trees and we're willing to comply with the number of street trees, add a few street, street trees around the, uh, perimeter of the proposed development. The one thing is that, uh, we don't think it's necessary to add the street trees along the undeveloped part of the parcel, uh, near the, along the southerly border, uh, just because there are a number of trees being maintained as part of this development. So, uh, I'm not sure if there's a real point in putting street trees down there where there's already pretty heavily existing wooded area.
So I would recommend if you're going to install additional trees, maybe consider putting them up at the corner there, at the corner of Alair and Lakewood-Farmingdale Road. You have a car that careens off that roadway as a result of a sideswipe accident, you don't want that car going into that building. So that's another consideration that you may want to, you know, you may want to consider.
Sure, that's a good idea.
Or some type of, of other barrier either, I don't know if it's permissible about a berm, uh, that may launch the car a little airborne or some type of, uh, guardrail system there, just at the corner there, just in case you get that, you know, you get the, um, angled hit and you...
Yeah.
And sends a car off.
We can definitely add it, I think that's...
Just a recommendation.
We're, we're, we're agreeable to add a couple more trees here in compliance, to comply with the ordinance requirement just for the developed part, um, and then that'll, that'll add as well as, it will be kind of a safety factor for any, for any vehicles. Um, as, as part of this development, there is going to be a, a tree replacement cost, um, associated as we are removing a number of trees. We're removing eighty-seven trees total and that equates to about three hundred twenty-three trees, uh, and we are going to work with your board, the board professionals to, to agree upon the amount and submit the, uh, tree replacement fee. Went over the sanitary sewer, as far as utility connections, um, you know, we are doing the sanitary sewer connection as, as I did mention. Uh, from a water perspective, we originally, on the previous development, we were going to be doing public water. Uh, water actually similarly located at the southwesterly corner of the intersection. We received a quote from New Jersey American Water because they, they would do the water extension to our property. Uh, the cost was quite excessive. We actually submitted a waiver to the DEP, uh, as part of our application, uh, to determine if we could get a waiver from connecting to public water, uh, due to the excessive costs of actually crossing and, and connecting to the water, connecting our site to water. New Jersey American Water and, and the DEP issued a waiver, uh, from requiring us to connect to public water and we were approved to have a well permit onsite. So we're going to be using well onsite and as I mentioned, there's no sprinklers or anything onsite required, so there's really not a substantial impact to the overall layout. Uh, from a stormwater perspective, as I mentioned, we're going to have, we're going to have inlets located throughout the parking area. Those inlets are going to connect, collect the water that's, uh, from the, it's going to basically be generated from the proposed parking area and from the, uh, proposed building. That water is then going to be routed underground, uh, to the proposed detention basin at the northeastern corner, corner of the property. From the detention basin, then we're going to be, uh, routing the water through, um, a manufactured treatment device, which essentially is a, a large Brita filter, which will help clean, clean the water. Uh, and then the water will be ultimately discharged into the county right away, uh, to an inlet that's located in Alair Road. So overall, the, the, the stormwater design will meet, uh, the state standards NJAC seven colon eight and, and, uh, we will modify it to, to comply with the township requirements.
Who maintains that?
I have a memorandum that, uh, you received from the Monmouth County Board of Health that provides that the site is serviced by public water. So the department had no objection to granting approval. Now that you have a well, have you notified, uh, and gotten approval from the Monmouth County Board of Health? Board of Health?
We have not, but we're going to be submitting as part of our residential compliance.
Okay, you will?
We will, yes. Yeah, in the, in that letter, I believe it says, if public water is not, is not provided, then you shall resubmit back to the board. So we're going to be resubmitting back to, back to them.
Who maintains that filter, if you don't mind asking?
Actually, as part of, as part of our approval process, Laura will ask us to prepare a operation and maintenance manual for the overall system, the drainage system, and then also the manufactured treatment device. And then the, basically, the operations manual requires a certain amount of inspections to be done throughout the year to confirm that there's no trash built up in the detention basin, that there's not, you know, paper clogged and different orifices and that sort of thing. So that, that operations manual is what, what is required to be maintained, what's required to be followed, and typically that's recorded.
Did that record it?
It's a channel phone.
Okay.
But if I, if I could, Mr. Townehouse, this is a private system, so the applicant's going to be responsible to do that. The town would have the O and M manual on file, but they're obligated to make those inspections and provide whatever documents it is to the township. The township would not have to maintain this system.
Is there something that goes into the deeds? The next property owner knows that there's something that they need to maintain?
Well, there's no easement on this that goes to the township of Howell, so it's all private property.
Okay. I just, it's the first time I've heard of something this elaborate for a property. I've been on this board, so I was just asking, what, what are the?
Just the manufactured treatment device?
Yeah, I don't remember seeing something this sophisticated.
It's pretty commonplace.
Yeah, they are pretty common, especially if you have like underground systems, you have to find a way to treat the water. In Howell, we generally have the ability where people can do infiltration and they're getting the recharge. But if you don't have soil conditions that warrant it, you have to provide a mechanism to meet that quality. So manufactured treatment devices, I mean, they're accepted by the DEP. The DEP says that they meet the total suspended solid rates that have to be met. They can be, you know, some of them, years ago, they used to be much more maintenance intense, intense, they were difficult to lift out. But they're, they're not uncommon.
Is it safe to say that this is a DEP thing that they, the applicant has to coordinate with? This is not going to be a burden to the town sometime in the near future?
Well, again, it's a private system, so the township has, doesn't have an obligation to maintain this.
Let me rephrase my question. Who, who ensures that it gets, it's working properly? Somebody's making sure it's working properly.
That falls upon the applicant.
The applicant's obligation, Laura testified, to do the required maintenance and to file reports with the DEP is required.
That's, that's, that's the, I didn't get that. They have to file it with the DEP?
Is it township or the DEP?
They don't have to file it with the DEP, it's with the, with the town.
So the town, if the town ever asks for, if the town went to various-
So the town has the records, is what I-
If they ever want to go and just basically say, prove to me that you've followed the operation and maintenance manual, or you'd be fine. So that could happen.
Thank you.
Ms. Newman, can I just ask you, I remember from my early years when we had these types of the maintenance systems, that there was an issue that if we had a, a large storm event, a downburst or something, that it tended to purge what's in there.
There's, there's usually a bypass, so that if you have a tense storm, it will bypass that system.
Have they rectified that? Because what used to happen is when they had those, those downpours or cloud bursts, it would take all the suspended solids and just flush it out right into the detention basin. Have they modified the designs on those?
Yes, they have. I'm sure, they have bypasses in them now.
Yeah, so the, so the way, I like that you guys are interested in stormwater, most people aren't. The, the way it works is basically you have, you have what's called a water quality storm, which is approximately your one-year storm. If you've ever heard of storm events, you know, it happens every once, once every 10 years or whatever. So the one-year storm event is considered your, your water quality storm, where that water is then routed through essentially the Brita filter, which is a bunch of filters that are located within this big concrete box. When you have larger storm events, such as your 25 or 100-year storm, the larger storms, there's an, typically there's an internal bypass or there's an external bypass that basically it cuts off the amount of water after you get through that water quality storm, because that's where all the pollutants are in that one-year storm. So after that, once the pollutants are all gone off the pavement, et cetera, it's just water. It's typically clean water because all the pollutants are already removed. So that water is then bypassed around the filter so that, because if you routed all the water through the filter, it would lead, it would lead to excessive use, and then you could end up having to replace the filter cartridges a lot, more often.
Okay, thank you.
As far as trash removal, there is a proposed trash enclosure located at the northeastern corner of the parking lot. We had originally proposed a chain link trash enclosure. We are going to change that to stockade fence to comply with the board's professionals' comments. We located it at the northeastern, northeastern corner of the property in order to keep it away from any residential use adjacent properties. The building will kind of screen it as well as, you know, the various landscaping throughout the parking area.
Mr. Chair, if I may, is there going to be any medical waste or disposal, and how would you circulate that?
Um, no. Okay. Yeah, just normal, not-
No medical waste.
No medical procedures, so-
No medical waste?
No.
What about needles?
They're, they're placed in a plastic receptacle.
I think he hasn't been sworn in.
Yeah.
We have the doctor sworn momentarily and he can identify himself for the record.
Yakov Abdelik, Teaneck, New Jersey.
Sir, do you promise or swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth during this hearing?
I do.
And please restate and spell your name for the record, please.
Yakov Abdelik, first name Y double A K O V, Abdelik, A B D E L H A K.
Thank you.
Sorry, ma'am, what was your? What was your question?
Medical, you had, the first indication was there is no medical waste. It's been my experience with doctors of this kind that there is blood vials or syringes, so how are those disposed of?
So any blood vial or any needle or any sharp object are placed in the red receptacles and contracted out with a company that picks them up.
And where would those receptacles be placed? In the front of the building or at the?
They come during office hours and take them out of the different exam rooms where they're racked, they're never, they're never left outside.
Okay.
As far as signage, what we're proposing, we are proposing no building signage, and we're only proposing one monument sign at the southwesterly corner of the property. It's indicated in blue in Exhibit A 12 where the, where the proposed sign will be. The sign itself is going to be one sign, whereas two signs are permitted by ordinance. Aesthetically, the, the sign is going to essentially fit in with the architectural, the architectural character of the building. It's going to have a pitched roof above it, and it's substantially smaller than what's permitted by ordinance. Forty-two square feet is proposed, whereas 80 square feet is permitted. It complies with the requirement for a 10-foot setback from the front property line. The maximum, as far as the maximum height of the sign allowed in the zone is 45 feet, whereas the height is actually going to be 12 feet, substantially lower than what's, what's allowed by ordinance. It's going to be externally illuminated, so again, it'll fit in with the residential character of the neighborhood. The one thing is that we do need a variance as far as clearance, because the ordinance is really written for your, your large freestanding signs, whereas this is going to be a small monument sign. It's going to be three feet off the ground with a total height, as I mentioned, of 12 feet. So what we're asking for is a variance, where we're going to be providing a three-foot clearance to the ground rather than the minimum required by ordinance, which is seven feet. And we can comply with that if the board requests, but then we would just have to raise up the overall sign, which, which I don't think, I don't think it's in the discretion. I don't think it's a good idea for the overall neighborhood to do that. But we can do it if the board so wishes. And one other thing I'd just note, there's no signs on the building, whereas 20% of the building is permitted to be used for building signage. We're just going to be having the one freestanding sign that, again, it's going to have a brick base, it's going to look very nice from an aesthetic standpoint with a pitched roof above it. So it really fit in well with the neighborhood. I know this area very well. You know, I drive through here all the time, I live in Massquan, my parents live in Freehold, so this is actually my road to my parents' house, so I drive through here like once a week, so very familiar with the area.
Mr. Chair, just a quick question.
Yep.
Would there be any plantings proposed around the base of the monument sign?
Yes, we, I believe there was some, there was a comment in one of the review letters about that. We are going to propose some landscaping around the base, kind of make sure it looks nice. Next, sorry?
Sorry, since you were talking about the building facade.
Sure.
I guess you do need a variance from providing the setback around the southerly facade of the building?
Right, there's a, there's a front yard setback, I believe, I might, I mentioned that earlier, is 19.8 from the, or 18.2 from the front, whereas 60 feet is required. Additionally-
No, I think she's talking about the facade.
The facade, so I was going to, sorry, yeah, I was going to get it then next when I presented the arch, the architectural plans. But essentially, there's, there's an ordinance requirement that requires a three-foot bump out on a building if it's over 50, 50 feet in length. This is the exact same building that was previously proposed, approved by the, this board as part of the previous application. And when I show you the architecturals, you know, I believe the applicant is really trying to, you know, aesthetically dress up a building as much as possible from a layout perspective. It doesn't work as well if there is a bump out. The one side of the building that does not have a bump out is approximately 55 feet long, whereas the requirement is for 50 feet. I imagine the intent of the ordinance was to basically break up any facades that are overly long, whereas this is only really five feet beyond the 50-foot requirement. Along the southerly part of the building, it's not just a straight facade. We're proposing built, we're proposing stone veneer on the bottom base of the building, and then we're proposing three or four windows on that side of the building to really break up the facade. In addition, there's also a pitched roof, which I think I'll probably just enter the architect's plans to kind of go over that. But there's a number of different, I think the intent of that ordinance is basically to make sure you don't have one large facade without any architectural features on that, on that side of the building, whereas I think we do that without really doing the bump out. So I'm just going to go over that. Now, these architectural plans were, are the same that were submitted to the board, so they don't have to be marked. And I'm going to be referencing A3. This is the architectural plan prepared by Rockwood Architecture, dated February 3, As you can see by the general architecture of the, of the building, it really is kind of a Victorian-style building. You know, overall, in this area, it fits in very nice with the, the older homes. On the, on the lower portion, you can see the right side elevation, which is actually the side, the side that's faces the road. As you can see, there's four windows on that side of the building, as well as two on the second floor, that really help break up that side of the building and don't really give it that, that feel of a 55-foot-long facade. So on the other side of the building, which does face the tile manufacturer, that does have a bump out. That bump out is only two feet. And you can see that on A4 of the architectural, architectural plans. There's a two-foot bump out with a small, small covered roof, which really helps break up the facade, and that, you know, has, has five windows on that side. So I think the overall intent of the ordinance is met here because we're really breaking up the facade with a lot of different features. The building overall, I mean, if you were to show me this, I'd, I'd probably think it's a residential house. Really was done well by, by the architect in order to really aesthetically fit in with the, the overall character of the neighborhood. Just going to the architect's plans overall.
Well, if I could, I, I don't want to move too far off topic. I just want to review with the board, though, that this facade that just has the windows and no breaks, that's 55 feet, is the one that you see on Alair Avenue, whereas the one that was just referred to that does have at least that two-foot bump out is the rear of the property. So, I mean, this board has had a pretty strong position on this issue. I do agree that the facade is very pretty, but I just want to make the board aware, though, that that will be absolutely visible, that one facade, as you travel down Alair Avenue in particular.
Just as a suggestion, maybe adding some kind of awning or anything on that side. I know it's not really used entrance, but just to give a visual effect.
Yeah, I could discuss that with my client at the break as well.
Maybe suggest it.
So the, the bottom view that's on the screen right now is the one that's facing Alair Road?
Correct.
Is that all the same siding from top to bottom above the nice veneer?
Yeah, it's, 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 on, on the side of the building, it is, it's hardy plank. And then, actually, excuse me, it's a, it's a-
Is it vinyl or-
It's vinyl, vinyl, and then the hardy plank is on, is on the top, so-
So it is two different types of-
Yeah, it's, it's broken up, yeah. But on the side of the building, I believe, it's just the vinyl.
What color is it?
Uh, right now, we're expecting some kind of tan or something of earth tone of that, that nature right now. We haven't really decided what color is exactly. I'm not sure if there's a requirement or anything like that in the ordinance, but it's something we've set to discuss with our, our client.
Is any of the trees going to block this side of that?
Yeah, we're, I think I mentioned there are going to be street trees proposed right adjacent to the building, so it's not, you're not going to be looking right at the building. There are going to be a number of street trees proposed along, you know, in front of the building and on each, on the side of the building.
I don't know, I'm on the thing. It's just vinyl siding.
Well, he's got the veneer on the-
I just have a question. Yeah, but he's doing hardy board and vinyl siding on the other faces, and it looks relatively really nice. Looks like a very nice, nice element.
Well, I, just so the board understands, we're not talking about changes in texture here. The, the standard is that once you exceed 50 feet in length, you're supposed to provide recesses or projections.
Projections.
So that's what it is to break that up. So they, I think in lieu of that, they're doing different textures along some of the facade, but that's really what the relief is that's associated with this.
I don't have a problem with it.
I, I would know, although the applicant didn't indicate this, that this side of the facade is the facade that's 18 feet from the road. There's a lot of green space coming off the entertainment right away there. This is the side that's 18 feet. So in fact, if they were to make a projection or-
Maybe closer.
Probably more of a projection as opposed to a recession, it may enhance that setback relief that is required. So it is something the board should consider. The flip side is they also need a rear yard setback variance, which is why I say that. So both sides require variance relief. So should we have pushed, should we push for a recession, it would exacerbate that relief?
Let me ask that, let me ask the question. I mean, does the molding above the window count as the projection?
No.
So we don't need a variance relief?
No. 10% of the facade, so a minimum of three feet in depth over 10% of the facade.
Sounds like we want to eliminate the variance. An awning of some sort is probably the only way to go.
Well, my only suggestion was for awnings just to create the visual barrier that the, maybe-
Some awnings over the window?
Yeah, they would still need a variance technically, but I'm just trying to enhance the visual facade.
I just spoke to my client and they're-
Yeah, that sounds like a reasonable-
They're willing to do the awning over the door and kind of make it break up the, the facade. And then also, they just, they just wanted to mention they were really thinking more of a bluish type for the gray-blue kind of fitting in more of a-
A little porch over the, over the door, that way it's more functional, the water doesn't get in. Would that, that count?
I'm sorry?
A little porch projecting out?
No, it doesn't. It's over the facade, so I think either way they require relief.
I think an awning over the door.
And I think what Nika's offering is you could do an awning. The awning still requires relief.
I'd be okay with that. A quick the awning.
A break, yeah. I mean, technically, they would still need a variance, it's just visually it might get more appealing, which was the intent.
And we would request a variance to place the awning.
Right, okay. I have a question. The, the, I don't know what you, what you'd consider the, the front of the building, I guess that the entrance to the building, though, will be where the parking lot is.
Believe it or not, the entrance to the building is on the side that faces Lakewood Farmingdale Road. So you actually have to walk around the building to get to the front. It's got a nice overhang in the front where you actually have a covered area. I imagine they'll probably put some chairs in there.
So the nicer facade is what we see on the main road.
Right, yes.
Is, is there access to the interior of the building from the parking lot, or does-
No, it's a walk, it's a walk around. There is a, there is a private entrance on the side of the building facing Alair Road.
That's that entrance, right?
Correct. But that's the main entrance that, that, that patients will see will, is through the front.
I might have a question for that. Since this is a facility with high-risk patients-
Yes.
Would you expect, or would you expect any kind of emergency vehicles accessing the site? And how would that happen if there's no access from the parking lot side of the building?
As far as like ambulances?
Yeah.
They'd have to pull in and then, and then kind of go follow the ADA compliant sidewalk around. They could also, if, if, open the side of the, side door. So I'm not sure if there's a requirement or anything.
No, there's no requirement. I'm just, with the type of use that it's proposed, I just, it's a question that would there be-
Yeah.
Would you be expecting any kind of emergency, you know, once in a while? I know it won't be an everyday issue, but how would that be handled?
Basically, the, the emergency vehicle would either park on the street or park in the, in the parking lot, and then they would have to either walk or roll the stretcher along the sidewalk if they were to have the end of the stretcher or something like that. As far as the vehicle, the emergency vehicles, we did, we did design this so that a fire truck could circulate around the parking lot. So I imagine a ambulance can very much circulate the site, access if needed.
Okay. I just think it, won't it be inconvenient for the patients in case there's no access from the parking lot to the building?
Right. That's what I'm curious about. Why, why is the front of the building facing 547 or Lakewood Farmingdale Road rather than facing the parking lot?
Just from a layout perspective and also from, to make it, if, if the front of the building was facing, facing the rear, obviously, it would, it would, the, it wouldn't fit as well with, as far as a neighborhood setting. You know, the, the building, the, the front facade of the building, the main entrance is facing the main road. That's the nicer facade. And then, you know, the, the applicant isn't, doesn't have a problem with having to walk around the building or have his patients walk around the building. So it's really kind of a preference. Sure.
To address the issue of emergency situation. So high-risk pregnancy wi, patients are not actually unhealthy. They're carrying twins, or they're, they have issues related to carrying healthy pregnancies. Those women that have chronic hypertension or actually are not medically doing well are actually hospitalized for most of the pregnancy. And in my twenty years of, of practice, I have never had an ambulance come to my office.
I respect that, sir. I just, and I get that it's your business model, but I have to tell you, if I was pregnant with twins or triplets, my cousin had triplets, the idea of her going to her high-risk doctor and having to park and walk entirely around the building would be very inconvenient.
So my office right now is in Pittinger Building on Route 135 and-
138.
138. And from the parking lot to the office would be, for most patients, about twice as long as they would be parking and walking now. Because when you get into the parking lot, you still have to go through the building and down a very long hallway. And I think that's many, many medical officers set up that way. Of course, I've had patients who, I've had very extremely heavy patients and patients that were starting to contract. And in situations like that, we just took them out the back door and, you know, brought a car up as close as possible, and then we escorted them to the hospital.
And the site, just to reiterate, is designed to be ADA compliant. So the sidewalk that wraps around the building, you know, you can wheelchair, all any of that is accessible. So just to kind of summarize, I think what we just discussed, we're gonna add on, on the, on the southerly port, part of the building where there's a door, we're gonna add approximately about a three-foot overhang over the door to break up the facade. That will slightly encroach into the front yard setback a little bit in order to comply with that variance. We already require variance for that side, so it's just gonna be a little bit closer to the road on, on that side. As far as the actual floor plan layout, there are a, a number of exam rooms, three exam rooms, one ultrasound room, three bathrooms, a waiting area, and a reception area, as well as a number of different offices and labs. So the overall floor plan, as you walk in, you have an entry area, and then you walk to your left, and you have a waiting area where, where you can wait to be seen by the doctors. And then you could, you'll obviously be assigned to a exam room and then ultrasound room as, as you get admitted. There's also a second, second floor, which is gonna be a private office for the applicant. Essentially, it's gonna be his office on, on the second story. Really, it's just an office. It's got a bathroom and then just some storage space. So-
I guess if I could, just because this is an amended application-
Sure.
Has the floor plans of the building changed at all since the board previously saw them?
Uh, no. So. All right. So that's, that's the overall rev, review of the-
Can you, can you put the floor plan back up on the monitor?
Sure. You want the first floor?
Yes.
One other thing to mention, the height of the building is gonna be twenty-six foot eleven at maximum. The overall permitted maximum is forty-five, so we're gonna be substantially lower than that. That's it for architectural. And then I was gonna go through, go over some of the variances and waivers and stuff.
Mr. Chairman, there's no further questions. The engineer will have the planner present his brief testimony, and then we can conclude our application.
Any questions, gentlemen?
No, who's answered. Thank you.
I have just a, just a couple of questions.
Sure.
For, for the record, just as clarification. As far as the variance relief, since we talked about the three-foot ho, overhang, I think we should-
Not a variance.
It's not a var, it's a, it's a waiver?
It's a waiver.
All righty. Okay. You would testify, Mr. Henry, that the hours would be nine to five?
Generally, nine to five, and occasionally open until approximately nine P.M.
And I just, I just wanted to clarify, is that Monday through Friday?
Monday through Friday, right. And the hours, I think they were- Yeah, just Monday through Friday.
Thank you. That's everything I have at this point.
Thank you. Mr. Mill, you've already been sworn as act, correct?
Yes, I have.
And you are a professional planner in the state of New Jersey?
I am.
Would you briefly address the variances requested by the applicant this evening?
Yes. For the record, there's two variances. The front yard setback to allow the front yard to be eighteen point two feet, where fifty feet is required. And also in the rear, it's sixty feet in the front, rather, and then in the rear, fifty feet is required and nineteen point eight would be provided. These are both bulk variances, and I'm going to address them under both the C1 and C2 ca, cat criteria. Under C1, we have to establish that exceptional conditions and the strict enforcement of the zoning regulations would result in peculiar or exceptional difficulties or an undue hardship. Under C2, we have to show that the variance would provide a means to advance the purposes of municipal land use law, and that the relief we're seeking would be a better zoning alternative where the benefits would outweigh the detriments. And with this particular property, what's really driving the need for the relief are the environmental constraints that are imposed on the property by the wetlands and by the archaeological site. And also, there's a second factor in that the right-of-way off of Alair Road encroaches into the property very significant amount. And that coupled with the geometry of, of the lot forces the building into the western edge of the property where it's at its shallowest and narrowest. And that's what creates the hardship, basically, because when you get into the western portion of the lot, the dimensions are so tight that it literally eliminates the building envelope. So that if you enforce the zoning controls strictly on this property, they basically zone it into, into utility. You basically have a hardship because you can't utilize the property without some relief from the setback standards. So because of those conditions, the, the hardship is basically created by the environmental constraints on the site and by the site geometry and by the irregular character of the county right-of-way. And those create the peculiar difficulties and undue hardship that justify relief under the C1 criteria, under the positive criteria for the bulk variances. In terms of the C2 criteria, I believe that the relief we're seeking would advance two purposes of the municipal land use law, at least two. The first would be purpose A, to encourage municipal action to guide the appropriate use and development of all lands in the state in a manner that will promote the public health, safety, morals, and general welfare. And also purpose C, to provide adequate light, air, and open space. And basically, this, this relief is a, a better zoning alternative, and the benefits do outweigh the detriments. Because first of all, this is a permitted use within, with the district. It's fully compatible with the uses which surround it and are most completely affected by it, which is basically the tile company to the north and the RV dealership to the south. The, this area to the east is basically woodlands. There's also a electrical right-of-way, so they're not impacted by, by the property at all. And the way the site's been laid out, the, the building and the landscaping are on the western end of the property, which mitigates any potential impact on the, on the residential property to the west. So basically, the way the building's sited is, is, is fully appropriate. The use is fully appropriate to the zone. And what the relief does is it allows the, the property to be used in an appropriate manner, consistent with the use controls and the zoning ordinance, and also in a way which mitigates potential impacts on surrounding properties because of the design and layout, which puts the more attractive as, elements of the property towards the, the more sensitive uses in the adjoining area, which are primarily the residential lot across the street to the west. So I believe the benefits of this relief, which allow inappropriate use to the property, outweigh the minimal impact of, of, of the relief on the surrounding properties. And as a consequence, it satisfies the C2 criteria. In terms of the negative criteria, we have to show that there's no impairment of the intended purpose of the zone plan. I think primarily, we satisfy that criteria by virtue of the fact that this is a permitted use within the zoning district. The variance won't have a detrimental impact on the character of the area. Again, it's consistent with the zone. It's a relatively small structure, given the other potential uses that are, that are typically in this district. And it's also been designed so that it has a residential character, which again, makes it blend in very well with the balance of the uses within the area. So I, I believe that the relief satisfies the negative criteria, both by not creating a substantial impairment of intended purpose of the zone plan, and also by redressing the hardship that's imposed by, that would otherwise be imposed by the strict enforcement of the zoning regulations. So based on all that, I believe the application satisfies both the positive and negative criteria and would merit the board's approval of the bulk variances. In terms of the waivers, you've already heard a lot of testimony regarding those, but I will, for the record, go through them and basically follow the order that's in the CME letter. The first waiver is from section 188-22, and that has to do with the lighting intensity. And again, you've already heard the engineering testimony on this.
If, if I could, I, I don't mean to defer your testimony, but these have all been addressed in quite length by your engineer.
I, I concur. I, I, I didn't want to cut short. And if the board wanted the testimony, fine. But if you feel it's been adequately addressed, I'll rest, rest.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Are there any other questions of the witnesses?
Yeah. Did you do a survey of adjacent uses to determine what their setbacks are and if they were, would be requiring variances?
As part of the preparation for the hearing, I, I went out and looked at the, the adjoining properties. There's, there's basically only one property that abuts this property. That's the, the tile company. And they, they're on a larger property and basically have a little more room. I did not measure the setback. I, I didn't want to trespass on the property. I don't believe we have survey information on it. So I don't know if you have anything to add to that, Jim?
I, I could measure, if you want. I could measure as far as the setback off the curb. Just get approximate, if you want, off the aerial.
No, I was more interested in the side yard setback. I'm-
Okay.
-eyeballing it, if you would. Does it appear that, that the ideal tile is, is a larger setback?
We can consult the aerial.
That's what happens when you have too many exhibits. So unfortunately, we don't really have, actually, you know what else? I don't have, look, so the tile is actually on the, on the southerly part of their property. That's where the drive aisle is. So directly adjacent to where we're proposing our building, there's actually a drive aisle immediately adjacent. So there is a, a pretty decent setback to the tile building. I know, I've, I've been there before. I've actually gone there to get tile. You know, the parking is facing the su, the south, so it's facing our building. So that whole strip along, along the tile property, there's, there's cars parked facing our building.
Just to amplify on that, what, what you're headed towards is really the Dallmar proofs. And with this particular application, even though it doesn't show very well on the aerial, the improvements for the tile center come up almost to the property line. And as a consequence, there's no ability to make this property deeper without compromising the improvements on the adjoining property. So basically, we're locked into the dimensions we have in terms of the, the exterior lines of the lot. And that's another justification, frankly, for the relief we're seeking.
I, I have to respectfully disagree. I, I mean, I, I understand where their improvements may be. The question was, how does this relate to other setbacks of properties that adjoin? That was the question, not where the improvements are. You've indicated, I mean, I would certainly say, given the shape of this lot, the narrowness of your frontage along Lakewood Farmingdale Road, and the depth, you have much more depth. And I, I think that speaks to it. But certainly, you, the plan and the exhibits provided don't identify where the ideal tile building is. And I don't think you were asked to see about acquiring additional property. I think the board's trying to obey a twenty-foot rear yard setback where, or nineteen point eight, where fifty feet is required, which is your property that adjoins ideal tile, and then your front yard setback. And they were just looking for a comparison of adjoining properties and those setbacks. And I think, based upon the information I had, you don't really have enough information to be able to ascertain what that is. But I don't think it's fair to say that because ideal tile has improvements built, it's created a hardship on your property.
I didn't say that.
That's how I heard it. So I apologize.
So the, the ideal tile property, per the tax map, provided on the cover sheet of the, some plans that were submitted, the ideal tile property is approximately two-hundred-and-fifty feet wide, roughly. Measuring off of our property line on the aerial exhibit, again, this is approximate, so. It looks like there's about a seventy-five-foot setback to the tile building and then fifty-foot on the northerly side, on the, as far as the side property. As far as the, the build, the residential building across the street from us, that is setback, you know, about, approximately about fifty feet from the, from the road. And then on, on the southerly side, and then on the Lakewood Farmingdale side, it's a bad, back about a hundred feet. From the, from, that's from the curb line. So, you know, those, those are rough dimensions, just to give you an idea. As far as the, the multifamily, the, the multifamily kind of townhouse development diagonal southwest to us, that, that is setback roughly about fifty feet from the road. So that, those are rough dimensions as far as setbacks with adjacent uses.
So it looks like the adjacent surrounding structures are meeting the requirements of the ordinance based upon these rough dimensions that we just talked about?
Yeah. I mean, the, a lot of these, a lot of these adjacent uses are, are older. Definitely, we're, we're, we're done a long time ago, except for, really, except for the townhouse development. That was probably done, what, like ten years ago or so? But the, we, we did have a compliant plan with, with, with the previous plan we had. And there's a lot of unique things that we discussed pretty at length about this property.
Oh, I, I, I agree with you-
Yeah.
-that the site geometry does lead to the need for some, some relief.
Yeah.
Okay. I am just trying to get- I am just trying to get something that, on the record, to give justification as to why we're going down to 18.2 and 19.8, right? I mean, it sounds like you had a building, you just simply shifted the building and said, this is what we're going to do.
Sure. So if you were going to be compliant with all the setbacks, the front yard setback, the side yard setback, all that from?
I'm not asking you to be compliant. I fully understand that if you were compliant, you would have virtually no developable area. Yes, I understand that 100%. I'm just asking you for some rational basis to say why we're comfortable where the surrounding uses were able to meet the requirements.
I think the answer is twofold. First of all, again, it's a very limited building area on the lot. And secondly, I think that the footprint of the building is basically as small as you can, it's borderline as small as you can have and still have a viable office building. It's a relatively small office building. It's two stories, which allows you to have pretty much the minimum amount of floor space to be able to sustain a practice here.
Okay, I think we understand.
And, you know, and that's what you wanted to get on the record?
Yeah.
Okay.
Counselor, anybody else?
Laura, unless there's anything in your letter which, I don't think, I think we've addressed them all, but I believe we'd be finished.
Do you agree to comply with that?
Sorry?
The attached technical report?
Yes, yes.
For the resolution, Mr. Henry, do you want to discuss with your client about the hours of the lighting being turned off and which fixtures you'd like to keep on for security? And Laura, is there anything to go back to and discuss about the accident protection that Chief Kudrick brought up?
Well, I think the applicant had indicated that they're going to be providing some trees in that area. I mean, my concern, too, is we don't want to?
How long will it take for those trees to grow to a size that will provide protection?
Well, installation size would be six to eight feet in that area. But you also have to be careful not to start to impede on site distance, which would be my other concern. So I think that that's something we can look at with the applicant to ensure that there is, you know, we're not looking for height, we're looking more for width. So I think that's something we can review with them to maybe intertwine low-lying and high.
Okay. Do you feel you can deal with it?
I'm just trying to ensure that your operation doesn't go, you know, doesn't seize as a result of a car crashing into the building.
I fully understand.
Yeah, I mean, it's advantageous to you guys, especially dealing with high-risk patients.
To put the proper trees and the proper height.
Yeah.
Chief, would you?
Put some bullets around, put some bullets at the corner there.
Well, would you recommend on that corner? Is there anything, maybe a?
Just like a wooden, aesthetically pleasing wooden, nice guardrail would probably, it doesn't have to be large, just.
Chief, didn't you say a tree also, like a big?
Yeah, a larger, a larger tree would be good.
Yeah.
We are, we are going to be proposing additional trees along both Lakewood Farmingdale.
How about a guardrail to satisfy the safety concern?
I'd have to discuss that with my client, but there's a number of different things that are going to be blocked. There's, right now, there's going to be, there's going to be a signal pole over there.
Why don't you discuss it with your client? Because I think that's a concern.
Wouldn't that be a county issue?
Plant their boxes.
It would be a county issue, yeah.
Would a county be responsible for putting a guardrail system in there to protect your building?
Well, the county has a whole plan for this intersection, which they're about to install. I don't believe, our plan that shows a guardrail.
There's also like a big, like roughly six-by-10 box, right? There's, it's proposed right at the intersection that essentially won't be blocking it, in addition to trees.
You guys want to go back to the county and discuss it?
It's a traffic control, it's a traffic control box. Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's, Carl will blast right through that, you know that.
So.
What's the speed?
It's basically a mailbox.
What's the posted speed on that, on Lakewood Farmingdale Road? Do you happen to know?
50.
And a layer?
A layer is 50 as well.
So two cars coming together at the intersection?
You know.
Don't forget, there's a light there, and you're coming over the, you're coming over 195 to come down there.
Based upon the topography I saw, it seems to be pretty flat. It doesn't seem to be much of a gradual slope there.
No, I mean, the site distance is fine in that area. I mean, we get multiple wrecks there each year, and then all it takes is for that one, you know, T-bone accident to send a car into that building. So it'd be advantageous for them to do that.
I've seen it happen.
Yeah.
Even a wooden guardrail?
Well, that's what I'm saying. It doesn't have to be a metal guardrail like you see on, you see on the interstate.
The applicant is not opposed to putting some type of decorative, you know, type guardrail protection.
Right, and you see the wooden ones that are very, that are very nice.
The wood guardrail is just kind of, you know, you have that negative connotation of a?
I fully understand.
That don't work that well.
Right, exactly. Yeah, I want to recommend a metal guardrail. It just, it doesn't look aesthetically pleasing with a beautiful structure like that, more like a wooden guardrail.
You don't want the big, yellow containers full of water sitting there in the corner? Black spray?
And it doesn't, it doesn't have to be that large, you know, in length, it doesn't. Just enough to cover that corner of that building.
So I just spoke to my client. You know, basically, they said they're willing to approach the county to see if they feel there's a need for the, for the guide rail there. If the county says no, they won't install it. If the county says yes, then we will install it. Is that agreeable?
That's fine, because county traffic engineers are going to be involved there as well. That's fine, I don't have a problem with that.
Lights?
Lights, we're going to leave, there's two downward-facing under the overhang, right in front of the main entry. We'll leave those two lights on. We're going to shut off the exterior lights around the outside of the building, and then we're going to leave one light on the, in the parking lot, just to kind of illuminate for, for safety purposes.
Now, will that require to be put in a resolution that they're going to meet with the county to discuss this?
Yes, that would be, certainly be a condition of approval.
That would be included in resolution.
It would, yes. And I would think the applicant would agree to that.
We can request that as part of our application with the county.
I'm fine with that.
Well, as the chief is comfortable, I am.
I'm fine with that.
What about the Health Department? Is there, does that need to go in the resolution, or they kind of held up in being able to?
That has to go in the resolution that they will contact the Health Department, because they haven't contacted the Health Department as far as the well is concerned.
That's correct. That would be a condition of approval as well.
Yeah, we have no choice, and we have to install a well.
The well has to be approved, I believe, formally.
And that would be the same as any outside agency approval that will be required to be obtained by the applicant.
Anything else from the board before opening to the public?
I just, I do have, Mr. Chairman, one quick question, just about the lighting. The time of the lighting that is going to be on, again, I just wanted to clarify that for the resolution.
It's going to be during business hours, and then within one hour following the end of, close of business, the security lighting will turn on. And then the two lights, which are located underneath the overhang in the front of the building, the lights underneath the overhang will remain on, and then one area light within the parking lot, in the center of the parking lot, just for security purposes.
I understand, thank you.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to open this application to the public. If anybody from the public has any questions to any of the experts here, please come up. Seeing none, close the public portion. Gentlemen, what's your? Counselor wants to?
Want to summarize?
Summarize.
Mr. Chairman, in light of the length of the application this evening, I think the witnesses put everything on the record we need this evening with regard to the variances. I think we've addressed all the comments of your professionals, and I've requested an application be approved with the long list of conditions that I think John and I have both taken notes on this evening.
If that is, I have a motion. Mr. Chairman, I will make a motion to grant amended preliminary and final site plan, bulk variances, and woodlands management for this application, SP 1008A.
Does that include also the waivers as well?
I'll second it. Yes. Roll call, please, Eileen.
Chief Kudrick?
Yes.
Mr. Nash?
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Tannenhaus?
Yes.
Mr. French?
Yes.
Mr. Boyle?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Nacaster?
Yes.
And Chairman Schneider?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, ma'am. Much for your time this evening.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Chairman, just having a next application as well. Is the board going to take a break?
Yeah, we'd just have a 15-minute break, please.
The board will now recess. The planning board will now reconvene.
Last application for this evening is case number SP 1036, Rosano Howell Land LLC. It's a minor site plan. It's an application of Rosano Howell Land LLC. As applicant owner seeking minor site plan approval for a maintenance facility improvement consisting of a modular office building with parking and the construction of a covered truck wash and fuel station premises known as Block 230, Lots 1 and 2, 360, Asbury Avenue. The application of Rosano Howell Land LLC was scheduled to be heard on June 15th, when it was carried to tonight with no further notice. Council?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, board professionals. My name is Todd Cohen. I'm the attorney for the applicant, Rosano Howell Land LLC. The chairman, Priti, accurately described the application before the board. My client originally went to the township to seek permission for a permit for a construction trailer that is now part of this application. When he found out that that would require a minor site plan, he decided to take the opportunity to upgrade the maintenance facility by adding the fueling station and the truck wash facility. And we're now seeking minor site plan approval for those improvements. We have met with your professionals back in June, which resulted in the resubmission of revised plans. That resulted in two new review letters, both dated June 29th and July 11th from CME, which should be part of your package, and we're prepared to address this evening. I have with me Mr. Eric Ballou, professional engineer, and Mr. Jason Fichter, professional planner, who will be testifying this evening. I would like to have them sworn. We have two exhibits to mark, and then we'll try to briefly address this application before you.
Gentlemen, do you both swear to, or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and not the butthook truth during the course of this hearing?
I do.
And again, please restate your names and spell your names for the record, please.
Eric Ballou, E-R-I-C-B-A-L-L-O-U.
Jason Fichter, F-I-C-H-T-E-R.
And Mr. Ballou, your credentials?
Yes, I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey, which I've been practicing for over 20 years. I have a bachelor's degree in civil engineering from the University of Massachusetts. I have testified in front of numerous boards, but this is one of the boards I have not done. In Monmouth County, I've done a lot of work in Long Branch, Pure Village, Beachfront North, and those types of projects. I've done a lot of different projects, as well as industrial and urban areas and things of that nature.
I'll accept your credentials.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Welcome.
Thank you.
You have two exhibits you'd like to mark?
Mr. Fichter, while we just take the opportunity, if you could provide your credentials as well for the board?
Sure, I have a Bachelor of Science in Civil Engineering from Lehigh University. I'm a licensed professional engineer and professional planner in New Jersey. I'm a licensed professional planner by exam. I did have to take the exam, that question gets asked a lot. I've, I did testify before this board in the past.
I'll accept your credentials.
Thank you.
Okay, gentlemen, we have two exhibits we'd like to mark. If you could please identify them.
Actually, I have three.
Oh, three, okay.
All right. So the first one I'm going to go through is an existing conditions aerial photo exhibit showing what's on the site today and talk about a little bit what's there. The second one will be the proposed improvements, where we take the existing conditions and overlay what we're proposing. And then a third exhibit is an elevation of the modular office building. So those are the three exhibits we have besides the plans that we've submitted to the board.
And will there be a five, six, and seven?
Actually, that will be the existing conditions. Exhibit will be A-8, the proposed conditions with the overlay, that will be A-9. And the elevations, the depiction of the elevations, that will be A-10.
Okay, excellent. So to start with, I'm going to use Exhibit A8, the existing conditions. To give a little bit of orientation, when looking at the project, north is towards the top, there's actually an adjacent residential home. To the west, we have Titten Falls Road. And then to the bottom, we have Asbury Road, which is a county roadway. And then the site backs up to a combination of different improvements. We have railroad tracks, then we have high-voltage overhead massive transmission lines, and then we have an adjacent industrial property that's also owned by the applicant. There are two lots included in this application. Lot 1 is located at the intersection of Asbury and Titten Falls Road, and that's in the AREE District, the Agricultural Real Estate Zone. And then there's Lot 2, which creates a majority of the project where all the improvements are. That's in the Special Economic District, the SED Zone. Overall, the project's about 15.6 acres. So what's on the site now for sort of some different types of improvements that we'll be talking about, starting with Titten Falls Road, along that roadway, there is a large portion of it is already screened with existing vegetation and trees. Then there's an open portion along Titten Falls Road that has an eight-foot-high fence with a black screen, setback between 10 and 12 feet from the right-of-way. Further away from Titten Falls Road, there's a maintenance building there. So what's happening there now is that, first of all, of Rosano's vehicles, the maintenance is occurring within that building. It employs about five employees or so, working typical hours from 6:00 to 5:00 p.m. through the week, and then certain hours, morning hours on the weekends as well. To sort of support the maintenance facility area, there's also a long, thin building to, along the northern property line. That sort of works as sort of a storage building, sort of a warehouse. So that will actually contain a lot of the types of materials and fluids and things of that necessary for maintenance are stored within that building. Further behind the maintenance building and outside of that warehouse, you can see in the center, there's a large gravel area. What occurs there is a storage of vehicles and equipment associated with the construction process, various-sized trucks, things like milling machines, rollers. And then depending on the time of year and the amount of activity, you could see between 25 or 50 pieces of equipment within that outdoor storage area. So this is sort of the basis of what occurs now at the maintenance facility. Now we're going to talk about a few enhancements that we were proposing tonight. So we're going to look at Exhibit A9, which is proposed conditions. So with regards to the proposed conditions, we'll start sort of with the southwest portion with the proposed modular building. The way we've set back this building is about 240 feet from Asbury Road, screened by a tremendous amount of trees. And it's almost 240 feet as well from Titten Falls Road, also screened with trees. So we've sort of placed this to try to screen this from the outside as much as possible. So the office building consists of approximately 2,900 square feet with an elevation that's 48 feet in width by 60 feet in length. So the 60 feet in length means that we need to abide by the three-foot projections. So I'm going to go to, I'm going to actually skip forward a little bit to an elevation of the office modular building. So what we're proposing to do to meet the projection requirements is that we're going to provide a three-foot projection in the center of the building for a distance of six feet, so we'll meet the three-foot projection for a minimum of 10% of the mass. So this modular building is going to be modified as needed to be compliant with your architectural guidelines for buildings. In regards to the office building, you know, adjacent to that building, we're going to place 10 parking stalls there, and we're going to make sure to protect the building from the parking stalls by placing bollards in four-and-a-half-foot increments, so to protect the proposed building from the actual vehicles there as well. The second component we're here for is a truck wash. So the truck wash is set back approximately 70 feet from Titten Falls Road and 167 feet back from the adjacent property line. Whereas the office building was constructed on gravelled area, this truck wash will actually be constructed exactly over top of pavement. So we're actually putting a building right over top of pavement to try to minimize our disturbance. And how the truck wash will work, we actually And how the truck wash will work, we actually show a water tank behind that, because what will happen is we'll actually come in, fill up that tank from off-site with a water truck, and then the wash plant is actually recycling the same water. So that's what's necessary to keep this functioning all the time, is recycle that same water to minimize waste. The building will be a typical metal panel building, about twenty feet in height, so it's well below the ordinance height requirement of forty-five feet. Another enhancement, sort of in the back portion of the site, behind that maintenance building, is the proposed fuel tank storage area. Since there are vehicles here and things need to be maintained, it made sense to make this opportunity for fueling of the vehicles as well. So we have proposed a thirty-six by forty, oh, sorry, a fifty by fifty-eight concrete pad, so we're in the center of the project. And what that's going to allow is to have three five-thousand-gallons tanks to supply all the different fuel needs. One will be typical gasoline, one will be diesel for on-road vehicles, and there's even a special diesel necessary for off-road vehicles. And besides that, there's even going to be another five-hundred-gallon tank, because certain diesel trucks have to have a second additive to be added to the fueling process as well. So I learned a lot about truck fueling through this process. In regards to parking, if you go by the ordinance requirements, we're required to have a total of twenty-eight spaces on this site. That's the handle of the parking necessary for the maintenance operations, as well as even the storage area has parking requirements. So we needed twenty-eight. So what we're going to do, we have ten in front of that new modular office building, and then we have a whole area along the back of the maintenance area for another eighteen stalls along that back edge. So by doing that, we'll have a total of twenty-eight and meet the parking requirement on-site. In regards to utilities, in regards to water and sewer, how we've designed this project is actually keep everything self-contained. So the office building, the way we're presently proposing it, is to actually have a sewage collection tank underneath the trailer and a water tank internal to the trailer. And then Johnny on the spot or type, that type of business would come, clean out the sewage as needed. So it's self-contained. The truck wash, we spoke about it again, there's no utility connections with that, because it's just a storage tank to be filled. In regards to lighting, there are some lights that are on the property now, one at the entrance gate and a couple on the building. But how we've designed this now, that we're adding additional lighting, some LED lighting along the whole edge of that building where the parking will be, as well as lighting along the frontage of the modular building with some building mounted combined with a pole light, and also the fuel station area, where they'll have a light as well. And so how we've designed this is to make sure that parking spaces have to meet the minimum requirement of point-three-foot candles, and then we sort of average out through the site to be at point-five-foot candles or less. We wanted to sort of light the space for safety, but we didn't really want to have a tremendous amount of any light spillage off of this property. So we've added some lights to take care of that and to address that. In regards to stormwater management, all of these improvements are small enough, this is not considered a major development. So what happens is the stormwater will go from Titten Falls side, sort of towards the northeast portion, and it'll go to the southwest portion of the property. So basically, the stormwater flows towards the tracks as well as towards the county roadway. So right now, we already have a NJTEP Nejyptes permit, so it's already under NJTEP oversight already for stormwater. So we're basically going to maintain the same drainage patterns that occurred today. And of course, since we're fronting on a county roadway, we also are going through a county planning board approval process, and they'll look at stormwater as well. And I should mention as well that the whole site is accessed off of Asbury Road as well. So that's the only access in and out of the site, with the exception that we also have a gate on Titten Falls Road that is locked. But it does have, we're going, we're proposing to put a Knox lock on that, so emergency services could access the site from Titten Falls Road as well from Asbury Road. There was some questions regarding to like the infrastructure and how the site exists today, can it support these proposed improvements? And everything right now, the site is actually in very good shape. It's very well maintained, the pavement's in good condition. So we feel the site is set up very well to address these improvements. Well, that's really all I have so far in my outline. There will be a professional planner, Mr. Fichter. He'll go through the variance relief and the waivers that are being requested, so he'll probably talk about a few items in further detail, but I didn't want to take a lot of the board's time and kind of discuss these items twice.
Question? All the water for that truck wash will be contained within that building?
Correct. So there'll be a storage tank that will have the water, then the other, then the actual washing operations will incur a kind of concrete bottom, and the whole circulation system will be internal to that building.
A question about the, I assume that these fuel tanks are going to be above ground?
They are. They're all above-ground fuel tanks.
Now, are there, like state requirements as to the construction of these tanks?
Correct. Especially from a spill containment standpoint, that all of these tanks will be double-wall tanks, and then they'll even have concrete encasements around or concrete containment around that as well, to make sure that the oils will stay within the property, within the actual containment areas. And as well as this one, you know, building permit process and things of that nature as well.
When you're washing the vehicles, the mud and stuff that comes off, what is going to happen with all that?
It'll be recycled through that water, and it'll be cleansed and through, there'll be cleaning up sort of filters and things of that nature that have to be cleaned over a period of time.
Are you storing oil on-site?
I, yes. I have a feeling there is some oil being stored on-site for like just things like greases and lubricants and things of that nature. That's why we have the maintenance building to store those things internal, as well as that storage shed that along that northern border, that allows all for internal storage of those kinds of things.
And you're going to discuss the fire setup, right, sprinkler system and all that, I would imagine later? Did you discuss it already, or did you?
We, there was, we didn't receive any requests for sprinkler systems through the fire department review letter or any review letters at this point in time. We feel based upon the size of the buildings, we didn't envision sprinkler systems, to be honest.
Okay.
Did you, I didn't hear in your testimony, are you putting ballers in the parking spots in front of the, that are alongside the larger building? I heard about the ballers in front of the office, but not the larger building.
Correct. I missed it. Yes, we're going to use that same four-and-a-half-foot spacing, so it'll be at the center of the stall, stall stripe, center stall. So we're going to use that same baller protection along the existing building as well, as shown on the documents.
The environmental commission letter, any concerns regards to these comments that they had?
No, we know that we'll have to address them. One good thing is that we don't have any tree-
You can address them here with us, so.
Right.
If you want to go through them.
I'm not addressing them now.
I think, yeah, I think, I think one of them, you already answered about it, how the oil filter, oil water sepper system works for the truck wash, it's all self-contained.
Right. And the second item is provide details on the fueling system construction, which I think we've also addressed. And the modular building will have self-contained water and no sanitary sewage services required. And to clarify how the sewage will be disposed, I believe he testified to that, we'll be happy to address it again.
Why do you think the, unfortunately, Nick's not here, why do you think they asked about detailed account of site investigation or remediation activities at the table? Would that have to do with the minor improvements you're making here?
Well, I'll say this once, there is actually some site remediation occurring on the site independent of this. There is some site cleanup occurring already on-site. None of these improvements will negatively affect that, but there is some environmental cleanup occurring.
So you're not, you're not placing these buildings in those sensitive sites?
That's correct.
Locations? Okay.
And one thing I want to also add to, there was enough pavement and gravel, so we're not taking down any trees as part of these improvements. So we're trying to preserve as much of the vegetative buffer that we have.
Are there any standards that are required, just Newman, that you know of, when you're dispensing oil for the area, our fuel around the fueling station? I know with a quick check that we went in, they put in special filtration systems where they had their catch basins in order to catch any fill, fuel spillage that ends up on the ground.
Yeah, I think they had something that would see through. I thought you had indicated that in here, it all goes through that containment system? Or?
I think that was more the truck wash system.
But your fuel tank area, is that regulated by the DEP?
It will be. It'll be covered under the Nejyptes permit that they have. They actually have a monitoring schedule. They actually will monitor, rainfall events will come, and they'll monitor certain key checkpoints, and they'll monitor that. So if there was any kind of exceedances in that testing, then the DEP is notified of that, and then they react accordingly.
How often is that testing?
That I don't know. I don't know, no.
I think the question is, though, I understand the double-wall tank in the containment system, but if there's a truck being fueled, and for whatever reason, it spills, it spills onto a concrete slab.
Hundred percent.
How is that addressed?
There are spill containment kits on-site, so in case like any of these vehicles were to spill, there's a spill containment kit, would be sort of like speedy dry, and also like barriers and things like that. So there's spill containment kits that people can utilize to react to spills that occur on something of that nature.
Mr. Chairman, do you know if the health department's okay with a permanent office building having a self-contained water and sewer system that's proposed?
I can't answer that question. I don't know that's one.
Because they're, because the health department letter doesn't, doesn't bring up anything like that, it just talks about a standard septic system, or it talks about having a potable water source or sewage disposal system, it doesn't make-
Can you, gentlemen, answer that question?
Yes, they, they did come back to us, and they actually talked about the sewage tank. They said that we need NJTEP administrative approval or something to do that system. We reached out to contact them to discuss that more. Unfortunately, the reviewer's on vacation, so that's one of the approvals that we'll have to obtain is the Monmouth County Board of Health.
So that'll be a condition?
It'll definitely be a condition.
Ryan, there's an updated report you may not have, dated July 14th, from the Monmouth County Board of Health, that's part of our package.
Oh, yeah, mine says July 3rd.
It's part of our package, I think it's somewhere up there, but it does mention that they cannot approve the sewage holding tanks, and that we have to probably get the DEP approval. Whatever approvals we require, obviously, we cannot install them until we have the proper approvals, and that could be a condition of the resolution. Any further questions of the engineer at this point? If not, we have Jason take the mic. And Jason, if you wouldn't mind, you've already been qualified as a professional planner. If you would address the variances and waivers requested this evening?
Okay, so just a quick recap to focus in on the planning considerations for this application. Again, Block 230, lots one and two, the proposed improvements here are focused on Lot two. There's no improvements to Lot one, which is key, because Lot two is located in your SED zone, the special economic development zone. Lot one is in your ARE three zone, which is agricultural rural estate zone. This is a permitted use. The site's been operating this way for many years. The operation's been there. It serves as a maintenance and storage facility for the company's operations, and the purpose of this application is merely just to enhance those existing operations, not an expansion per se, just to enhance what's going on there. As for surrounding uses, to the north and the east are similarly the SED zone. That happens to include a small residential lot on Lot 3.01 to the north. Lot 13.01 to the north is a large undeveloped wooded parcel. And then to our east, we have the railroad right-of-way as well as the utility easement. Beyond the railroad to our east is another property owned by the applicant, which operates as an asphalt plant. Lot one and south of the property is, well, Lot one itself is undeveloped. All of this area would be in the ARE three zone. Lot one is wooded and will remain so by this application, and then south of Asbury Road is the company's Central Jersey Fire Equipment. West of us across Titten Falls Road is a narrow stand of trees, and then you have Hogan's Alley right-of-way, and just above that, you have some undeveloped parcels. Just to summarize the application of what we're doing, Mr. Ballou talked about it in detail, but again, just to bring the focus down to the planning considerations, you have the modular office building, you have the fueling station, the truck wash, and some parking restriping. For this application, we require one design waiver, and that's that your ordinance requires private walkways to public sidewalks. But I would say that this is not the type of use that generates foot traffic to and from the site, nor do I believe that the neighborhood is conducive to this mode of transportation, so we would respectfully request that waiver. We require four variances for the application. All in all, I think these are very minor variances. I'll go through each in detail to explain why I feel that way. The first one is your ordinance requires outdoor storage to be within screened rear yards, and I've evaluated this under both the C1, which is the hardship criteria, as well as the C2, the flexible C. The hardship, in terms of that, this is an existing condition that we're looking to maintain, we're not looking to change the storage use, and the style, the size of the storage use must be maintained to support the applicant's ongoing operations. Again, this is not a new application, it's going on. We have the benefit of knowing what they need and how it operates, so we're just looking to maintain that area. As far as the flexible C criteria goes, we have the storage area set back a minimum a hundred feet from the property line. We're butting the railroad right-of-way, the utility easement, and the applicant's industrial property. In terms of the storage area being in the rear yard, I do believe in its existing condition, it's in the rear yard. It may fall into a gray area, which part of it is a rear yard or not. Nevertheless, in the proposed conditions, when that office building is put in place, we've now established that that storage area is clearly all within the rear yard, so it becomes compliant there. Last month, when we came here, I called your prior planner, Ms. Beam, to discuss this comment. The focus of this seemed to be more about screening it, because the ordinance requirement talks about being in a rear yard and screened. Your ordinance is not very clear on what constitutes a screen, what would be acceptable, so I had that conversation with her, and she acknowledged as well that the ordinance is unclear on it. So we talked about ideas of what on a typical site, if this was a vacant site, would be a screen, things like fences, evergreen screening and that type of thing. It just so happens on this site that we have a very, very substantial screen surrounding this yard in all directions. Lot one is completely wooded, the long driveway in from Asbury Road has some very large evergreen trees right along the side of it. We have the railroad, we have Lot 13.1 to the north. So I do believe that we meet the intent of the ordinance for this requirement. The next variance is that your ordinance requires fences to be a maximum of four feet high and at least fifty percent open in front yards. I've evaluated this under the C2 criteria. As Mr. Ballou mentioned, along Titten Falls Road, there is a, an existing chain link fence that's eight feet high, and it has a fabric attached to it. The chain link fence itself would be fifty percent open. The eight feet would exceed the four feet, but there is a fabric placed along a portion of that fence, generally between Titten Falls Road and that main storage building, and the intention of the fence and the fabric is for enhanced site security. Next variance is that your ordinance requires a fifty-foot buffer. I've evaluated this under the C2 criteria. The existing home is what requires the buffer, so this is a non-residential use adjacent to a residential use, and that's where the buffer requirement comes in. That existing home, I think we can all recognize, is a non-conforming use within the SED zone. But the nearest improvement to that residential home is the proposed truck wash, which is separated from the residential property by a one-hundred-foot-wide natural buffer, again with some pretty substantial trees, and there's no trees being removed by this application. Your ordinance, to clarify this buffer requirement, has some very specific criteria for compliance. There's a list of four things, and you have to provide at least two of them, tremendous setbacks, berms, walls, that kind of thing. In this case, we happen to have that hundred-foot separation of substantial trees, so again, I think we're meeting the intent of that buffer separation. The last variance we're requesting is a front yard setback to the main storage building of fifty feet where sixty feet is required. The building has, we checked some historic aerial photos, and the building's been in place here since at least nineteen fifty-three, and we're not proposing any changes to this building, so that is a classic hardship situation where the building is there. Generally speaking, these improvements are very minor, and the site is very large, and this is a minor site plan application, which kind of puts it in perspective. Now, as far as the C- Now, as far as the C2 criteria goes, I'm obligated to demonstrate to you that at least one of the purposes of planning are advanced by this application, I feel there are a few. The first is, I think it's an appropriate development, which promotes public health, safety morals, and general welfare. Again, this is an application that's intended to enhance the current operations of the site, and I believe that's what helps protect the general welfare. We're providing adequate light, air, and open space, there are no improvements in this application that'll impede upon the light, air, and open space of any neighbors or the public. We're providing sufficient space and appropriate location for an industrial use, it's an existing site, it's been operating for many years, the surrounding land uses and land cover are compatible, for good reason, it's a permitted use, not surprising, and it makes sense to enhance the operation of the site so it can continue. I think we're promoting a desirable visual environment, these proposed improvements are insignificant really relative to the overall size of the site and the fact that they're all being placed internally. We're preventing urban sprawl and degradation in the environment through improper use of land, this is again, an application for improvements internal to an existing facility. And lastly, I feel that this application conserves property values in the neighborhood, again, it's not an expansion, it's not a new use, this is an existing operation, and we're just looking to enhance that. Now, as with any variance request, you're weighing the positives versus the negatives, so I want to briefly go through some negative criteria considerations. Most significantly, there are no use variances being requested with this application, these are all permitted, well, it is a permitted use. The outdoor storage in the rear yard is an existing condition, it's not changing by this application, and it's surrounded by a very substantial natural buffer, and I do believe that it may be considered compliant, if not certainly compliant with the intent of your ordinance. The fence exists today, and it provides enhanced security, the front yard setback exists, and there's no changes proposed there, the building has existed in this location for many years, which means that passersby and locals are accustomed to seeing that building there, and there's no changes to it. Now, while your project, while the project doesn't meet the ordinance's requirement for buffering from a residential use, there is a significant natural buffer separating the property from that, the applicant's property from the residential property, so again, I do believe it meets the intent of your ordinance, and I'd also note again that that residential use is a non-permitted use in the SED zone. Project is not going to increase stormwater runoff, it's not going to increase traffic, all the improvements are proposed on existing impervious areas, and these improvements are not going to be seen by the neighbors or the public, except perhaps the truck wash area, but even that, I don't think is going to be very, very visible. So for those reasons, I don't feel that this application would cause a substantial detriment to the public good, nor do I believe it would substantially impair the intent and purpose of the zone plan. As you consider the negative criteria, I always like to highlight the word substantial, you're not evaluating if there's a detriment to the public or an impairment to the zone plan, you're looking to see if there's a substantial detriment or a substantial impairment, and I don't believe this application rises to the level of substantial in either case. And when you balance the positive considerations for this application versus the negatives, I feel that the benefits substantially outweigh the detriments, if any, giving you the ability to approve this application with confidence.
Thank you, Jason. Any questions to the planner?
Mr. Chair, if I may, quick question, what kind of equipment or vehicles would be stored, like the general height of that, those kind of equipments?
So the type of equipment would be sometimes like trucks, like large, like dump trucks type of equipment, and then there's even things like milling machines, you know, pavement machines, so just various rollers, just various types of construction equipment. I would say all of those could go under underpass, so probably nothing higher than 15 feet in height, I would say, with this equipment.
Okay, so no cranes or any?
No, no large cranes or anything of that nature.
Okay, and this is going back to the professional planner's testimony, if you could expand on, you talked about property values?
Yeah, that is one of the purposes of planning, and my point there is, again, it's not an expansion of use, it's not, you know, the improvements that are being proposed here really aren't going to be visible. This property is there now, and it's operating, and as far as a neighbor or the traveling public can tell, it's not going to change. So for that reason, I don't feel there's going to be any impact on the property values in the neighborhood.
Okay.
Is there anticipated increase in truck traffic?
No, again, it's an existing operation, it's intended to continue as it is, this is just merely an enhancement of what they've been doing.
I apologize if I missed it, do they currently wash the vehicles onsite?
No. No.
Okay, so then it would be an expansion, if you would, of the operation in that they're introducing something new.
I guess you could look at it that way, but really, we're not introducing additional trucks, you might actually look at it as a benefit, because now you can keep those vehicles onsite and clean them rather than put them out on the road to go somewhere else to get clean and come back.
And are the, there's currently a fueling operation onsite?
No, there is not. Same thing, no.
Same thing, yeah.
Yeah, keep them there, keep them off the roads.
Well, the letter does mention that the, like the hours of operation, number of employees, employees per shift.
I believe the engineer testified to that previously, but we can-
Oh, I'm sorry.
I can reiterate.
If you already talked about it, then forget about it.
You sure? Okay.
Yeah, no, it's all right. Let's look at another part of the letter.
I'll open it now to the public. If there anybody from the public would like to address our experts here? Seeing none, close the public portion, gentlemen.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to grant minor site plan approval for application SP 1036.
Second. Roll call, please.
Chief Kudrick?
Yes.
Mr. Nash?
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Mr. French?
Yes.
Mr. Boyle?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Nacastro?
Yes.
Chairman Schneider?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, everybody.
Counselor, would you say something about the next case that we have on the agenda, case number SP 1026A, L and L Paving Company?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, as I referenced earlier, in nine C on the, on the agenda tonight is case number SP dash 1026A, L and L Paving. As stated in the agenda, there will be no testimony on this application, it will be carried to August 17, 2017 with no further notice. Anyone here for the public?
So if there's anybody from the public for case number SP 1026A, L and L Paving Company, this testimony, this will be carried to August 17 with no further notice.
I appreciate that.
Mr. Russo, do you have anything on a master plan to report?
Yes, Chairman, very briefly, the master plan subcommittee met on June 22nd, we heard comments from the public, a, a new draft was drafted on June 29th, and we are actually going to meet next week, next Thursday, 7 o'clock, the public is allowed to attend, to go over the June 29th draft, and this will be the last round of public comments before we put it on the record on August 3rd, I believe.
Very good, I will try to be there. Green Team, Mr. Tannenhouse, do you have anything to report?
Yeah, we've got some exciting things going on at the Green Team, we, we're up for our renewal of our certification for June of next year, so we are moving forward and getting our certification moving forward. We're short some points, so we decided to tag team with Howell Day and add a little bit to it to get some points for the Green Team, and we're adding a green fair to the Howell Day date. And one of the things that we're looking to do is, is we're going to be promoting all of the good things that the town has been doing over the years, and saving money, saving carbon footprint, saving fuel and so forth, so it's going to be exciting, take a, just come to Howell Day and see the things that we're going to be presenting and showing to the public what we're doing.
All right, did you consider, did you consider doing that at National Night Out? That's a huge community event for us, it draws thousands of people, much more than Howell Day would.
What day is National Night?
August 1st.
That's August 1st, but that's, isn't that in the parking lot?
Of Target.
Of Target.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll bring it to the team. We can have more than one green fair day.
Yeah.
It's, it's fine.
National Night Out.
Very good, Deputy Mayor, anything? Counselor, any reason for us to go into executive session?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Then I'll take a motion for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post it. Sure.